So anyway, I'm going to talk a little bit about faculty and staff. Make sure you know who everybody is, the people you certainly need to know and see, and our resources for you. Talk a little bit about some of the numbers, rankings, some awards from students, faculty and staff, some new faculty that we recently hired if you haven't had a chance to meet them or take classes with them, as well as some vacancies in some areas that we're going to be hiring in the near future. Talk a little bit about our alumni and some of the upcoming exciting things and opportunities for, for the students. So I'm hoping everybody's familiar with the associate chairs in the school. Dr. Burns, who is not here, is the associate chair for undergraduate programs. So if you're an undergraduate, you need to know Dr. Burns. She's been in the position for about a year. She's, she's great. Dr. Curtis, who I believe is out of town, is the associate chair. Oh, you're hiding back there, Kim? Is Susan hiding too? No, she's not. Susan is, is not here. Dr. Kim, who's the associate chair for graduate program. How many of you are graduate students? It looks like it's a pretty good mix. And the undergrad-- why are the graduate students in the back and the undergraduates in the front? What's up with that? That's crazy. Should be the other way around. And then Dr. Webster, who's in the back, was the associate chair for finance and administration, and he sits right next door to my office. As far as key staff leadership is concerned, you probably have met many of the people here. Again, if you're an undergraduate student, you certainly would have interacted, hopefully, with Tracy and her staff. If you're a graduate student, you should have interacted with Robert and his staff, and there are various other folks here that you might have interacted with. If you did something wrong in terms of IT, you've interacted with Mike Anderson because he will find you, he will hunt you down and make sure you're following all the IT policies and the various others that are, that are shown here. Jess Hunt, she's a communications person, and so from a news perspective, you need to see her, send her news items, anything, awards, please do send them to her. Send them immediately now, forward it to her. We want to get our news up as frequently as we can. So let's talk a little bit about enrollments, where we are as a school. Here we see the enrollments over the past 10 years, actually, from 2003 through fall of 2005. We started our environmental program in 2006, and as you can see from the numbers, that program is growing rapidly. And much of the growth that we see in the school, in terms of civil and environmental, is in fact in the environmental program. As a whole, we're roughly around 750 as of the fall of last year, where the fifth largest program in the, in the U.S., so we're very, very big. Only a few programs are larger. And from a student faculty ratio, I think we're at a good spot, 15 to 1, where we're one of the lowest student faculty ratios in the college, which means that you get a lot more personal attention than perhaps some of the other college of engineering majors. And then in terms of our-- and that was the grad, that was the undergraduate numbers. Our graduate students were roughly around 400. Again, we're one of the larger, largest graduate programs in the country. Fairly good split between masters and PhD, about half and half. That has been trending towards more PhD students compared to master students. Of the master students, of the graduate students that are here, how many are PhD? And how many are masters? So the majority are PhD students. So you guys have been around for, for a few years, so you know, you know the routine. And here you see some of the demographics of our graduate population. And here we see where our graduate students are from. We have 34 countries represented with our graduate students in 23 states, and you see here how that distributes amongst the various countries around the world. Very diverse graduate program. The rankings, recent rankings came out. We're, continue to be a top-ranked program. If you look at the civil program itself, the undergraduate program, which comes out in the fall, those rankings have us as number three for both civil and environmental, and the graduate programs has civil as number five and environmental as number four. That's the highest ranking our environmental program has ever had. It's continuing to move up in terms of its graduate ranking. College of Engineering has both the undergraduate and graduate programs ranked fifth, and then some other different ranking metrics. Georgia Tech was ranked as number one return on investment when you look at the cost versus the money-making potential of our students. We're number one. And then most recently, actually just yesterday, a ranking came out for smartest students in public colleges. Look at you. So, so we were number three. Oddly enough, one of the, the programs that was ahead of us was UC Berkeley, which is where both Kim and I went. Well, I went there as an undergraduate. Dr. Curtis went there as a graduate student. When I was there, we weren't quite as smart as you guys are, so I'm not sure if things have changed, but this is, is pretty interesting ranking. And I have no idea how they base the smartness rankings, but anyway, pretty cool. Lots of great awards for our students. Who here is a part of ASCE? Very good. They did very well this year. The ASCE group in the competition. The Concrete Canoe placed second, placed first in the Steel Bridge. Is that the first time we've placed first in a little while? Is that correct? Maybe? Those were there? So, very good. And first place overall. So they did a really good job in terms of the ASCE regional conference. Other awards for our students. Jamie Fisher got the Eno Fellowship, which is a transportation-based fellowship. Janil Smith-Collin got a CH2M Hill Fellowship, which I think is also a transportation-based fellowship. Best PhD Thesis Award went to Sun Deho. I believe he works with Costas Konstantinidis in environmental, if I'm not mistaken. And the ACS Graduate Student Award went to Mr. Sun. And a set of awards went to a number of students that are working, I believe, with Dr. Curtis and Dr. Jacobs in the air of Self heal and Concrete. So, or some recognition in terms of that they were highlighted in the magazine, I believe, is what it was, for some of the cool work they're doing. Number of recent faculty awards and honors. Dr. Stan Marina has given the Carl Tozaki Lecture, which is a top lecture for geotechnical engineers anywhere in the world. It was a big deal. I believe there were 1,000 people here in Atlanta watching his lecture, which was very, very well received. And in fact, a number of them came back and visited the campus, which was really good press for us. Larry Jacobs was named the ASME Fellow, Fellow of American Society of Mechanical Engineers. Ted Russell was named a Regents Professor, which is the highest honor a faculty member can get. Only one or two from the institute get that per year. He is our first Regents Professor since 19, to the 1980s. George Sauer was the last one, and you see his big plaque up there on the second floor. So it's a really great honor to have Ted Russell named Regents Professor. We recently had the institute awards announced. We're really pleased to, to see that we took the lion's share of teaching-related awards. There are half dozen or so teaching awards, and we ended up getting four of those, if I'm, three of those, if I'm not mistaken. So Kerry Watkins got an award for junior faculty teaching excellence. Don Webster got an award, Faculty Teaching Award, as well as Michael Rogers got the undergraduate educator award. So we took three out of the roughly six teaching awards at the institute level. So really pleased to see that our faculty are recognized for their great teaching. And for those who aren't aware, GT Strudel recently was acquired by a company named In图graph. And so Larry, Leroy Emkin and Mac Will, how many have had either of those for Structures One, Structures Two, or something else? So anyways, so that company was purchased, acquired, and they've retired, and they're not working for those companies. It's a great story to see a product developed at Georgia Tech being acquired by a major firm and is going to live on, and it's going to maintain the name GT Strudel as it moves forward. So it's a really, it's a really great story for them and for the institute. A number of other alumni awards. Jamila, who I had in class several years ago, was named New Faces of Civil Engineering by ASCE. They typically name a handful of people who are doing interesting work with this award. Ben Colvin received an award for some of the clean water work he's doing, and he was featured on CNN and Fortune Magazine. Charles Nelson, who is a member of our advisory board, received an award for engineering management from the Louisiana Engineering Society. General B. Love, who was recently, was recently named the head of NATO and Supreme Allied Commander of the U.S. Air Forces. And in fact, as I was driving in this morning, he was on the radio, because he's leading the effort of what's going on in Ukraine and Russia, and he was on the radio talking about that. So he's, we're very proud of the work he's doing in Europe. And then John Huff, one of our alums, was recently named to the National Academy of Engineering, which is the highest honor that an engineer can get. So alumni are doing great, great things. We have a number of new faculty in the school that were hired either last fall or one case this past January. So Pat Mokterian, she comes to us from UC Davis, expert in the area of travel behavior, travel modeling. So she's part of the transportation group. Lauren Stewart came from UC San Diego, where she did her PhD there in a short postdoc, and she does work in the area of blast-resistant design. So she and I are teaching a class together now that looks at extreme hazards and how you design for earthquakes as well as blast and wind. And Young Cho, who is actually a graduate of Georgia Tech, but has recently been at Nebraska, works in the area of the construction automation and clean buildings or green buildings, and he's part of the construction group. And then Dr. Joe Brown, who just started in January, works in the area of water and public health in the environmental group. So we have some great additions to, to our school. They're all outstanding teachers, and they do amazing research. So I'm really excited to have them on board. We also have a search on for a number of chairs, so we'll be bringing in some senior faculty or more senior faculty into the school in the areas of transportation, the Dickerson Chair, in the area of structural engineering and construction, the Jones Chair. And we recently announced the creation of a new chair that's named after Frederick Lowell Olmsted, famous landscape architect, who, who will bring that person to the school that works in the area of sustainable urban infrastructure. So it'll be a really unique person, probably have a, a joint appointment in the architecture school, and they'll have a hybrid between civil engineering and, and architecture. So we're really excited about beginning that search. Just a little bit about our alumni. I know many of you, particularly the undergraduates and some of the graduates, had an opportunity to interact with our alumni at the last board meeting that took place in the fall, and they really enjoyed interacting with our students. In fact, they really, more than anything else in the meeting, they enjoyed the opportunity to, to meet with the, with the students. We have approximately 10,000 living alumni all over the world from our program for civil and environmental engineering. About one in eight are CEOs or founders of presidents of their companies. So we have an incredible alumni, incredible advisory board. They're doing incredible things. So, so what can you do with a degree from CE, just to give you a sense of some of the things, companies that our alumn-- this is obviously just a very small smattering of the various companies that alumni from our program work at, large firms, small firms, private sector, public sector. Some are traditional civil engineering and some clearly are not. And so we really, again, I think the civil engineering degree provides you with a degree that allows you to do some very, very unique and varied things. Just again, a photo showing some of our alumni, including Phil Breedlove, Rick Mormon, who's the CEO of Norfolk Southern, is a civil alum. Lynn Wilder has her own company. She was very instrumental in some of that construction work that took place during the Olympics, which was here in '96. Suzanne Shank, who actually just received the award for distinguished alum from our program, which will be awarded that next Saturday, is CEO of a major investment firm. Phil Breedlove I mentioned earlier. Jamie Pageant's a graduate of our PhD program, professor at Rice. And Greg Koch is heading up the global water program for Coca-Cola, and he's just up the street. So just again, just the diversity of things that our alumni are doing is, is pretty amazing. And our alumni are even out there being football coaches. So Ken, Ken Whizzen-Hunt, who's a civil alum, played for Tech, received his degree from Tech, and just recently was named Coach of the Tennessee Titans. And so he's actually going to be chairing the award ceremony that's taking place in a couple of weeks for alumni awards. And he's still very fond of, of our program, continues to talk about our program, so pretty cool stuff. So what's new and exciting in CE? What are some of the things that are coming up? Many of you heard of the Forecast Program, where we're trying to capture video of our students talking about civil engineering and the profession and some of the great things that have come from civil engineering and some of the great things to come from civil engineering. I encourage you, if you haven't had the opportunity to come up with a video, please do so. I think we had a deadline of April 1st, but I think we will once again extend that a little bit further out, maybe to the 7th or 10th, something like that. I know it's going to get busy around that time because finals will be rolling in, but we do want to capture the video because this is going to be an opportunity for us to highlight civil engineering, the profession, and some of the things that you can do or that civil engineers do. So please do, do that if you have an opportunity to. I think we've had eight or nine entries thus far, so do that if you get a chance. We're also doing 30-second engineering video, as Nortay kind of puts his head down. So one of the things that we want to do is, and this is for grad, this is mainly for PhD students, is to capture in 30 seconds or less what your work is about. And so you end up writing, it's fairly easy to write 300 pages of a thesis, but to capture that essence in 30 seconds or less so that the public can understand is, is important to do, but also difficult to do. And our goal is to try to capture PhD students before they leave in a 30-second engineering blurb that we will put on our website. So, and Nortay is, is going to be our first, first victim with that. You can put your head up now, Nortay. We are embarking on a fairly significant change to the CE website. If you've looked at the website of the institute and the college, they're all in the process of making changes now, and we will be following with that probably in the fall. We hope by the time classes begin in the fall, we'll have a new website, both in terms of the look and the colors. It's going to have a much easier feel. It's going to be much more dynamic, a lot more video, and a lot more interactive. And so we're pretty excited about the changes that we'll be making. And I think our website right now is four, four years old or so, and so it needs to, is that we're at that time now where we need to make that change. So look, we'll probably at some point try to get feedback about the changes as we make them before we roll things out, so please look for that email as we try to make sure we engage you to make sure that it's, it's kind of user-friendly and it's capturing what we want to capture from our, from our perspective. One scholarship I want to point out, because we kind of sent this out recently, and I'm not sure how many of you were able to see this, but this is a Brandon Buckberg Scholar Internship Award. It's given by SGH, which is the company that he worked for. Brandon was a undergraduate here. In fact, Brandon was in either my first or second class that I taught when I was a fairly new faculty member here in 99, 98. I think I might have had Brandon in 99. Brandon died suddenly last year, and the company is naming the scholarship in his honor. So in addition to the $5,000 that you will get for up to two or three years, you get an internship at SGH, which is a major structures firm all over the U.S. His office happened to be in Boston. And it's for undergraduates who strive for excellence in all aspects of their life. So they're looking for somebody who is well-rounded, not just an outstanding student, but also is very active in service and other aspects. So it fits his personality very well. One memory I have from Brandon is we had a reception for my graduate students, must have been 19, 99 or 2000, and he drove his green Chevrolet and parked it literally in the middle of my yard, not in front of my house, but literally in the middle of my grass, so everybody can see his big green Chevrolet. So he was a great, great guy and a great engineer and a true-- he wasn't a great guy at that moment. My wife was not very happy. But that was his personality, life of the party, and just a really, somebody we're really proud of.
Is there any, 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 is there any communication from this?
I don't know. That's a good question.
No, I'm responsible.
I, I, I don't, I was gonna say, I don't think so. I really don't think there's not, there is not a U.S. citizenship required for that. Yes?
And you have to have at least two years left in your graduate studies?
Junior or senior. Enough time that you're not graduating before you have an opportunity to work with the company. Yeah, so you can be a senior but still have another semester left. So please do apply to this if you haven't had a chance to. If you need an extension, let me know, and I'll let the company know that somebody's sending the application, because it does go straight through them. It doesn't come to us, it comes through them, and then they engage us after they get the application. So please do, do apply for that. We recently received an endowment to begin our first lectureship, leadership lecture series in the school. And so this, the lecture series will likely start either this fall, but more likely in the spring, where we'll bring a very significant leader to campus focused on civil engineering to the school. We might bring one or two per year. We will engage the undergraduates and graduate students, I believe, in the selection of the speaker. We will probably try to gear it towards an alumnus of the program, and we have a lot of alumnus that are incredible leaders. And this will be a great opportunity to have a lecture series that not only brings undergraduates and graduates together, brings people from different affinity groups together as well as faculty and staff. And so it's really exciting for, for me to have the opportunity to kick this off, our lecture series, which we've been trying to do for years, and we finally got it endowed just a few months ago. So keep an eye out for that announcements before we, we roll that out in the fall or the spring. We are in the process of developing a global engineering leadership minor, which will be part of the minor in Leadership Studies program, which is out of the Provost Office. How many people are familiar with that program? Minor in Leadership Studies? So, a few of you. There, it's a, it's a, it's a program where you take three additional classes and you get a minor in Leadership Studies. The classes are focused on policy and leadership in general, and there are several tracks right now. We are, we will be developing our own track, which is focused on global engineering leadership, which will obviously have a very civil engineering tone to it, and we'll be developing several classes around this area. So what it's going to entail is, there are existing classes right now. I think one is public policy. There's probably a class on leadership, and we'll be introducing several classes that will complete the minor. One is probably going to be something related to global health, water, air and sanitation. And then there'll be others related to infrastructure. And so we hope to have this developed, probably not by this fall, but perhaps by the spring of 2014, where we'll have a core set of classes that you can take to, to have the certification of a global engineering leadership minor. So, pretty exciting stuff in terms of, of having this distinction on your degree. It would be pretty, I think, would set you apart from others without a doubt. CE art. So as you know, we renovated the building, but there are a lot of blank white walls around the building. So one of the things we will be doing beginning this fall is to put CE art all throughout the building. And this is a picture representation of that, and this is an image from Hai Ying Wang, who does work on, on oil and the seepage of oil through sands. And this is what these pictures represent, some analysis as well as experimental work she's done. And so we'll be having these throughout the building that represent the vast diversity of the school, and we'll have little descriptions about what it is. And it's really an opportunity for people as you're standing in the hallways and waiting for her to go in your class to learn a little bit more about, about the, about the profession. And others who come to the building can also learn more about what civil engineers do. So we'll be starting that again after the summer. So I want to end with, again, remind you of some of the opportunities, ways you can get engaged, both within civil as well as various opportunities in the institute. Again, undergraduate research. For those of you who are undergraduates, if you haven't had an opportunity to do so yet, please get involved in undergraduate research. I think it's a great experience for you. It looks great on your resume. I think it rounds out your undergraduate degree in a very beneficial way. And there are various mechanisms in which you can get involved in undergraduate research, and I'm just showing a few of them, few of them here. And here are some of the, again, some of the topic areas that the faculty in the school work in, a number of really interesting topics, from energy to health to water, sustainability, natural hazards, smart infrastructure, a lot of really cool topics that faculty work in that you can get engaged as an undergraduate. Student organizations here, a list of, of just some of the student organizations, some of the larger ones within the school. I encourage you, if you haven't joined up with any of them yet, to really get connected. They're doing great things. I've been trying to support the student organizations more and more, and if there are things that I can do as chair to help your student organization, please, please do let me know. Study abroad, there are a number of different opportunities for study abroad shown here. I know many of you have taken advantage of these already, and if you haven't, please look into it, and if you, if you have any questions about that, let, let me know. Speaking of abroad, the Global Monday Learning Fund. How many people have taken advantage of the Monday fund? Some, most recently, right? How was that experience? Where'd you guys go? Tell everybody.
Panama Canal.
Very cool. So anyone's in Panama, how long were you there? A week. So this is, this Global Learning Fund is, again, it's an endowed fund that allows our students to travel for a global experience anywhere in the world at some point during your undergraduate or graduate career at Georgia Tech. There are different levels as individuals. You can go as small groups. You can do it within a context of a class. We've had a few Monday classes. We'll likely have, we didn't have one this spring, but we'll likely have more Monday classes in the fall and then, and then next spring. It's a fairly straightforward application process, so if you haven't applied yet, haven't taken advantage of it, please do before you graduate, because it's, it's, it's a really cool, neat program to be involved with. DC internship. So one of the things that the institute is trying to do more of is to try to get our students who have an interest or an affinity to get involved more in the intersections of policy and engineering, in our case, the policy and civil or environmental engineering. And so we've begun providing stipends for DC internships. As you know, I mean, you may not know, most DC internships are non-paid, and so it's hard to get a Georgia Tech student to go to DC, or any student really, but certainly Georgia Tech student because of the opportunities you have to go to DC for an unpaid internship. So we have a program where we will actually pay you to do an internship in DC and work with various agencies as it relates to, we will probably place you in an agency as it relates to civil, civil or environmental engineering and policy. So we had a graduate student last year, Zakiya, who took advantage of this. She actually worked in the White House Office of Science and Technology Policy, had a great experience, sent me a picture from the White House basketball court. She was really excited to be on, on the same court that President plays on, but she had a great experience, very, very different. It's a very different experience from what you do here in school, particularly for a graduate student, where you're kind of, you know, knee-deep for four or five years in a topic. To have to go and write policy on a variety of topics gives you a very different perspective on life. And so, again, consider it. If you're interested, speak to me, and I'll be happy to provide you with more information or connect you with our DC representatives, Robert Knatz, who's down there. We are making a, as you probably are aware, we're really making a push to reach out to students more and more. Quickly learned that emails no longer work. It's very difficult to reach people via email, and so we've obviously tried many very different ways. The social media, as you see here, thanks to Jess Hunt and her efforts and the students that work with her, we've really done very well as it relates to Instagram. We're number one in the college of engineering in terms of followers. Is that correct? So I'm even on Instagram right here. Please follow me. I'm competing with my daughter. If I get more than her, she's going to pay me 25 bucks, although I have no idea where she's going to get 25 bucks. She'll probably borrow it from me to pay me. But, so Instagram, we're number two in the college on Twitter, and we're number four on, on Facebook. So tag us in your posts at CE@GT. So anyway, so we are making a major push in, in the area of social media, and we're doing very, very well. A couple of upcoming events. The Inventor Prize is taking place today, tonight, okay? Just in a few hours, and I believe we do have one group from Civil. Is that correct? Is anybody here part of that? Probably not. But we have a group from Civil that's, that's participating in that. So that's happening tonight. We have the AWS Spring Fling, which is taking place on Saturday at Orme Park. And if there's anything that I could do or the staff or the other faculty, please do let us know, and we'll try our best to do that. So tweets for sweets and swag. So I guess if you want a, I'm not sure if anybody's tweeting. Nobody's tweeting, right?
We have a few.
Okay. Nobody in this room. Nobody in this room is tweeting. Is tweet for old—is tweet like just too old? Is for OP? Is that what it is? No. People don't tweet. Any questions that I can answer for you? Questions, comments, concerns that you might have? Yes?
What do you do if you have a construction management track now that's—
Yeah. That's a good question, and one I'm not surprised to hear. Are you undergraduate or graduate?
Undergraduate.
Undergraduate. So I think the undergraduate track will be less phased. So we're doing a couple of things, and the question was, what's going to happen to the undergraduate or the construction program moving forward? So we're doing a couple of things. We're in the process of hiring additional faculty, hopefully one in the construction area. There are several faculty that are in the building construction program that will be getting joint appointments or courtesy appointments in Civil, which means they'll be teaching classes that will count both for civil engineering as well as building construction. So I think in the short term with—that we'll be able to offer adequate undergraduate classes. In some cases, we may have to get an outside instructor to offer a class to make sure that you have enough classes to be able to complete your emphasis within construction. The graduate—the graduate courses are a little bit more difficult to do for a number of reasons. That's too complicated. But in terms of getting adequate undergraduate classes in the construction, I think we'll have enough between the offerings in BC and what we'll offer internally as well as outside instructors. Yes?
I have a question on that. So for the fall, there's like no construction elected at all, or are they kind of adding any between now and like today?
Undergraduate again?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I think they are. Don Webster is in the back there, and he's probably—
There is a group of—
It's got to be senior. And so I—we have a meeting later this week with the construction faculty that we have, and Larry Connaughton, we're trying to come up with a plan and see if we can get more, more classes offered. Any other questions? Are there any specific programs or marketing being done to attract more females to this CEE school? Okay, great question. Kim Curtis. Dr. Curtis can comment on that. Thank you. Thank you, Kim.
So at the graduate level, I can say this year we've been really aggressive, as we always are in recruiting types of underrepresented groups, and so that also takes women. And this year we made tougher offers, there are offers that are fellowship on top of the graduate research or graduate teaching apprenticeships, too. Many students, but the majority of them are actually women.
Thank you.
I would also point out the undergraduate population—
Yes. Yeah. So it's one of the—it's one of the only programs in the College of Engineering that has more than 50% women, so—so we're—
Megan Hayes in here? Here to come get some swag?
Get some swag. Any other questions? Yes. Is hiring a new chair with a sustainable urban infrastructure focus to be more classes? Very good question. Where did that come from? Oh, it's right there. Yes. How'd you do that? Oh, you—okay. Yes, it does. I should realize that. Yes, it does. I think, depending on the exact area that this person's hired in, and again, we're looking for somebody that embodies the ideals of a Frederick Olmsted, that looks at infrastructure and the environment holistically, there clearly will be a set of classes associated with that. When do you graduate, Lily?
This spring.
Yeah. It's not—it's not going to help you.
Maybe I'll come back for graduate.
Then it—then it would help, because it's like this person won't be on board till probably next spring, spring of 2015.
What about also with the hiring of Joe Brown?
Yeah, I mean, oh—
Are there going to be like water and—
Yes, yes. I think—I mean, Joe Brown—for those who don't know Joe Brown, we mentioned him earlier. He came from the Public School of the London School of Public Health. He's obviously going to offer some water, water classes probably this fall. And again, we're hoping that his class forms a first class as part of the global engineering leadership minor, which will be on kind of global health, looking at water, sanitation, and so forth.
Joe Brown is offering a global-wide championship course this fall.
Well, there you go. See? What's it called? What's—what level?
Eighteen thirteen.
So it's very—okay.
Global-wide.
But undergraduate. Undergraduate or grad?
Grad.
It's grad only? Okay.
Well, it's the same thing I was saying about if they're a senior—
Okay.
—and have careers in two-point-seven-georgian.
Can I have the white one?
Yes.
Related to that, the global leadership minor, you're talking about, are those places open to people? Program or the videos and so forth?
That's a good question. So I—I think the class like that would be open to anybody. What you can't do, unfortunately, and this is where we're dealing with the provost office, you can't double-count the class. So you can take it as part of your civil credit, but if you want to get the minor, you'd have to—you wouldn't count it as towards your, towards your graduation credit, where in the process of trying to get that changed, but that's—because it's a minor, you have to take it on top of everything else as it stands. My eyes are not as good as they used to be. As a CE, is beneficial to get your masters right away or get some kind of work experience? So the question is, as a CE or CEE, is it beneficial to get your masters right away or to get some kind of work experience prior? In my opinion, it just depends. It depends. Now, if you do the BSMS program, which we have, obviously, it's—the benefit of that is that you can double-count two classes, and you can get your masters done in essentially two semesters, which is fairly quick to do. And I'm of the opinion, why not just keep going if it's only going to take you two semesters more to do it, as opposed to working and then coming back? So it just really depends on your personal situation, whether or not you stop or keep on going. Yes?
Do you need to do what? You need to rest? Yeah.
Why do you need to rest? I didn't rest. Do you mean like a physical space? Do you mean like a physical space to rest?
I'm asking about health.
Oh. Kim, do you want to answer that question?
I think they still execute it as a great way to— Maybe you brought China and the spring weather, because that would be awesome. But they are, you know, renovating the library, and part of the plan with the library renovation is to turn it into a miraculous student hangout space a lot of times, but they're—
I don't—yeah. We don't necessarily condone you sleeping here and staying all night and never going home. We'd like you to go home and, you know, rest and get some food and all that, so—yes.
So I have a— I was curious about, is there a security for like, does it need two beds? Because in the last year, we used to have one, I was going to ask you, very often.
The student, faculty student? Yes, 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 yes. So we had one last fall.
We did?
I think we did. Yeah, we did. Right out—you missed it. And we'll—we'll probably try to have one before people break for the—for the summer.
This may be—
Yeah, we'll probably have some sort of cookout maybe before everybody breaks for the summer. The tricky part, obviously, is it gets really busy in the next couple of weeks, and so we got to try to time that well. Yes?
Is research for credit—if research for credit is counted as a course? Oh, that's a good question. Sorry.
I haven't used my Twitter in ages.
So is that you, James?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess you wouldn't be Molly. Is research for credit is counted as a course? Do you have to pay tuition to be part of that?
Yeah, I had a course number, so—
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I had no idea. I didn't know that.
Three credits, yeah.
It's three credits, okay.
I was pretty—
I know Architecture Room, like Architecture Room had like the construction management construction program. I was wondering if you guys were going to include that within the program now?
On the graduate or undergraduate?
Both.
I mean, there's two different things. On the undergraduate side, you'll be able to get—and to be clear, I think people are a little confused. So you wouldn't get a degree—like, right now in the College of Architecture, you get a degree in building construction. Our degree is in civil engineering, but with an emphasis in building construction or structures or geo or environmental. So you can do that, yes. So we'll have offerings in the construction area to provide you with emphasis in building construction. And on the masters level, yes, you can focus on building construction, or for us, it's going to be more general construction, not just buildings. It's going to be construction management, where you'll take classes. Some of it might be in building construction, some of it might be in management, some of it obviously would be within Civil.
Molly, Allie, and Cullen, can I have one? Can I ask my question? I have to ask Molly's question.
Oh, I didn't see—I'm sorry. Ah, okay. Let's go, which time wise—okay, we'll go back here, Cullen. Right. I did that one? Okay. Has there been any thought to making it easier to do a cross-disciplinary senior design project? Don, do you want to handle that one?
There's definitely a—well, quite a discussion there, because in the junior level, it's a new senior design project, it's sort of a cross-disciplinary. There's been some success, which has, I know, we have several certain projects in the senior and other units. It turns out that there's a big challenge to find a project that really needs expertise on both sides, and is that the right skill for the simple community to work for. I think Architectural Department as well is trying to create a, you know, a force that we would be able to help and support for people to sign for. And then are there any initiatives within CEE to promote co-op internship?
That's a great question. One of the things I've realized in dealing with my advisory board and other groups I've been working with, particularly in the construction and structures area, is the importance of co-op experiences. And so we're looking at ways that we can try to better develop some sort of program or resource to better connect our undergraduate students with co-op opportunities. And so—who asked that question? Okay, yeah. So we're trying—we're working on that, because right now we don't have a designated resource. There's obviously a central resource, the Co-op Office, but we're looking towards developing something more within Civil to better connect our students with co-op opportunities, because we—because we have tons of our alumni and EAB members that want to place our students in co-ops.